I would like to call to order the advertised. As in stated monthly meeting, September twelve, twenty twenty-three of the Lowermoreland Township Board of Commissioners.
I believe the United States would matter. It is a powerful, dangerous, one nation under God, indivisible, benevolent, God.
Start of internal affairs under item A, review and consider minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-three. Any of the commissioners, any comments or corrections? In hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to you, Dr.
Yes.
I have a question on the minutes.
Yes.
Under new business. I believe last month, Commissioner Howson presented a responsible contract on its under new business and it's not important to notice.
Okay, we can make sure that's mentioned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-three with comments, additional comments as mentioned. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have, thanks. Under item B, review and consider September twenty twenty-three bills. Any of the commissioners have any questions or comments on that? Any questions from the public? In hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the September twenty twenty-three bill list. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In a second, second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? The ayes have, thank you. Under item C, review and consider resolutions establishing twenty twenty-four MMOs for the pension plans. Manager Hoffman, do you want to just summarize that?
I can do that. So this is our annual reminder that it is now September. Um, so there are three resolutions that are in front of the board of commissioners this evening. Um, and first two have to do with our police pension plan. Um, and it is based off of the actuarial valuation that is done uh for the plan by the plan actuary. Um, so the first resolution has to do with whether or not there's any requirement for our officers to make contributions to the plan. Um, which those are terms in our collective bargaining agreement. Um, and based off of the current valuation being used, uh, no contributions are necessary. So the first resolution that you have this evening is number twenty-three dash eighteen. Um, and that resolution will confirm that no member contributions are necessary for the plan in twenty twenty-four. The second resolution um in relation to the police pension plan is establishing the minimum municipal obligation. Uh, so this is a calculation that we have to do um that determines what the township's contribution into the plan is. Um, and then there's also a component that we do later into the year uh that will determine the amount of state aid that we get uh to help offset that contribution. However, um, because uh we're still able to use the one-one-twenty-one valuation of the plan. Um, though uh just the current value at the time in order for the plan to meet its future obligations, there actually is no MMO necessary um for twenty twenty-four. Uh, so that is a very helpful thing within the context of just twenty twenty-four. Um, and then when we go to prepare the budget, um, there is no specific pension contribution necessary for the township into that plan. Um, so that is resolution number twenty-three dash nineteen, uh, which will establish that the police plan has a zero dollar MMO. The third resolution for this evening has to do with the non-uniform pension plan. Um, so this is for everybody other than our police officers. Police officers uh all continue to receive a defined benefit pension. All other township employees receive a defined contribution. Um, that amount is uh ninety-two-five percent of base wages. Um, so this uh MMO for the non-uniform takes an estimate of the twenty twenty-four uh base salary. We do know some of that for uh the two uh union groups uh that that make up our non-uniform staff. Um, but then we use an estimate for all of the uh management level staff um that are 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 not in unions. But we have not actually yet determined their salaries for twenty twenty-four. Um, and so the calculation that is done is just nine-and-a-half percent multiplied by the estimated twenty twenty-four uh base salaries. Um, so that gives an MMO of two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and four dollars. So that third resolution is number twenty-three dash twenty, and it establishes the twenty twenty-four MMO for non-uniform employee pension plan at two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and four.
Thank you for summarizing that. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? And I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash eighteen.
Sir.
Is in motion and second to approve resolution number twenty-three dash eighteen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash nineteen.
Second.
In motion and second to approve resolution number twenty-three dash nineteen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, it's happy. Thank you. And the last one is resolution number twenty-three dash twenty. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash twenty. Second, is in motion and second to approve resolution number twenty-three dash twenty. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I said, thank you. Under item D, review and consider the twenty twenty-four budget schedule. Manager Hoffman, would you like to share the proposed dates and times?
Yes, so as always, we uh will proceed with uh the kind of same budget meeting structure that we do each fall. Um, so the first meeting is when uh we meet with the three community groups that receive township funded. Um, so that would be uh the Huntington Valley Fire Company, the Burnathen Fire Company, and the Huntington Valley Library. Um, so we were proposing to meet with those three groups on Tuesday, October third at six P M. Um, and then later on, uh typically in uh late October, but this year there's an extra week before we get to the November meeting. Um, so we'll actually get to do both of the budget sessions uh in the month of November. And the proposal for that is to meet uh for budget session number one uh on Wednesday, November first at five P M. And then uh budget session number two on Wednesday, November eighth, also at five P M. Uh, so just wanted to confirm uh with the commissioners that that is an agreeable schedule for your calendars. Um, and then if so, we will get those meetings advertised. Uh, and then that will set the rest of the schedule that I'll do um internally with our staff to prepare a budget going prior to that first budget session meeting.
Right. I have an issue with October third. I'm gonna be away for the weekend busy. But the other two things I'll do. Are you able to zoom in for an hour? From busy?
No.
I can also provide an update to you when you return.
We do that? That's okay.
Okay.
Great. Uh, manager Hoffman, would you continue under item B, administration report your highlights?
Sure. So just a couple of items that I wanted to call out this evening and um I guess getting to uh focus on the exciting side of being able to bring on some new positions and uh address uh an upcoming retirement. Um, so just the the couple of items that I wanted to call out, I believe I see him on uh Zoom, at least his name. Is to uh let everybody know that Mark Showmaker is the individual who has been selected uh to be our chief of emergency services uh in collaboration with Burnathen Barrow. Uh, so there is a later agenda item uh this evening that does include uh his employment agreement. Um, but he is scheduled to begin on September twenty-fifth. Um, so we're super excited to have uh seen that process all the way through. Um, the next is that in our code office, um, we have extended a conditional offer to Ted Mittelman. Um, you may know him locally, uh either being on our zoning hearing board uh or being a volunteer at the Huntington Valley Fire Company. He uh for many years now has been the code official in Wrightstown Township. So we've extended him a conditional offer uh to join us as uh one of our code enforcement officers. Um, and everything uh shaping up to begin on October twenty-third. Um, so we're very excited about that as well. Um, so very excited for both Mark and Ted, who join us from uh Bucks County and coming down to the Lowerland uh to hopefully uh serve us well. Um, and I believe I use the word, we are excited far too many times in that whole description. Um, and then last, just the the main thing that I'll be working on between now and our November budget sessions is all of the detail that goes into our budget. Um, so as much as uh there will be other things that are going on, that will be my primary focus for the next couple of months. And that is what I have for this evening.
Great, thank you. Any questions for manager Hoffman? Any questions from the public? Assistant manager Lee?
Um, I have two items to highlight. One is contrary to what was in my report, there is no planning commission meeting this September. So I know everyone's probably broken about that. And then the newsletter, the fall, the fall newsletter is currently at the post office, uh ready for distribution. It's supposed to start hitting houses as of uh end of this weekend, so everyone should get it by next week, hopefully, as long as everything is moving according to schedule. The electronic version should be up on our website this week.
Any questions for the system? Under item F, we have the tax collector's report, and we are privileged to have our elected tax collector live today to communicate. Come join us at the podium, we can see you.
They can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here tonight because they are collecting school taxes due Friday. So if you're grumbling in the hallway, you'll know why.
And it's nothing to do with us.
No, definitely not. Um, so its base collections are at ninety-seven point twenty-eight percent. Actual collections are at ninety-five point fifty-six percent, which is including the discount and penalty amounts. And the outstanding amount due for taxes for the township is one hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars. And outstanding trashes thirty thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Any questions for our elected tax collector? Any questions from the public?
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Under item G, my liaison reports that civil service admission has not met since the last meeting. And I continue to attend daily school. Uh, Board of Director of Commissioners, their most recent meeting, they had a nice preview of the new high school as it's marching over. And that completes the internal affairs. The chairman recognizes Commissioner Currie, chair of the community, yes, sir.
I have a question for the school. Okay, do you need me to come up to the podium? Maybe you started up in Chris, this last week, I talked to you.
Yeah, whatever, right after their meeting.
Yeah, right after the meeting and uh there's a um, when the school, twenty twenty-four uh president stays when the school is supposed to be occupied by the new students. And there's an agreement on the table. Some of the commissioners weren't here for this agreement. Is it agreement or ordinance?
So it is the land development approval resolution.
Okay. Okay, so the, in that uh land development approval that the school has up to five years to install sprinklers into the existing high school. Okay, which everybody agreed with, that was a good timeframe for them to budget everything into the school. But now with Mary Avenue being open, should this board consider putting sprinklers in Mary Avenue?
So it's a very good question from my perspective is that we probably couldn't probably roll that into what was already there.
Already into this.
Because it was land development thing.
Right.
And I don't want to speak for the legalities, but I I don't think um it's in our jurisdiction because that school is already um, it's already to code today. You know, I'll defer to our uh marshal.
No, no, it's under code. I agree with uh Dr. Scott Heiser. I talked to him about it, everything, everything was under the code from the state that they had and put it under, okay? But the understanding and some, like again, some of these commissioners weren't here, the understanding was that Mary Avenue was supposed to be demoed. Okay, so that's why they came up with this agreement of the five years to put the sprinkler in there. That's why Mary Avenue wasn't a topic of putting sprinklers in that school. So should this be readdressed with the school administration? Or do we think that Mary Avenue may have a life of maybe five years and it's not worth putting sprinklers in there?
So I don't think, like you said, it's completely accurate, the Mary Avenue keeping or knocking down had no bearing on our plans for the new high school, you know.
Oh, no, I understand.
So they're not, they're not, yeah, they're not connected.
But they're not connected.
That's my understanding, Bob McRae.
So I mean, in terms of the decision that this board made, the language that went into the land development approval resolution was specific to the existing high school.
So, yeah.
There is no language about Mary.
Well, no.
And there wouldn't necessarily be. I guess the thing that, I guess rather than trying to give an answer today, I think the thing that we can do as the board of commissioners and your staff and solicitor advising you, is see if there is an opportunity um to work that in in a future conversation. And if there's a legal path to do that, and sitting here today, we don't have the answer to that.
We can't, we can't dictate.
No, I understand that.
Can't dictate that.
No, but at that time, there was an agreement made between the school administration and the board of commissioners to a five-year window to add sprinklers to the existing high school if they don't have sprinklers.
Right.
But it was under the understanding that Murray was going away. So I'm asking the board tonight, should they consider having that agreement with Mary Avenue? With sprinklers?
But that agreement only covers the construction of the high school.
Under the understanding, John, that Mary Avenue was supposed to be demoed.
That agreement doesn't say, this is under the understanding that Mary Avenue is staying open. The agreement doesn't say that. But the agreement is just for the construction of that land development plan and the approval. I mean, I think what Chris said is that's a conversation to be had with the school district.
Exactly, because what what is in the approval resolution is that five years from the date of occupancy by middle school students in the existing high school.
Correct.
They, this school has a couple of options. One is that the this board has obligated them to install sprinklers. But there's also language in there that allows uh the 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 district to be able to come to this board and ask for some consideration, given what other budgetary constraints or things that might be happening that we don't know about sitting here in twenty twenty.
It's an extension.
That might be in place for twenty twenty-nine.
Right.
So it it leaves open a conversation to be had at a future date. And I think part of that is we can strategize as a township because it was a safety consideration that I think this board was considering. Is there any path for a similar obligation to Mary Avenue? And I just, I don't know that we know the answer to that today, but it's a fair point that it's a discussion topic.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, my comment is just, you can't take that agreement and apply it there. That agreement's focused.
John, I get your point, but that that agreement was based on that Mary Avenue was going away. That's what, that's why that agreement was made.
Conversation, but that doesn't mean you can then impose that obligation on the Murray Avenue school. I mean, that's not written into that agreement, Chuck.
I understand that, but this should be taken under consideration, that they're keeping Mary Avenue open now, and you do have students in there.
We can thank Chuck for his comment. It's a valid point that there's a different set of factors that we know of today than the point of the approval resolution. But John's point is.
I understand what John said.
We don't necessarily.
Yeah, I I guess, I guess. Okay, so this will be taken under for consideration.
It's it's an issue that I think what Chris said, it will be brought up to the school district.
Okay.
It's all right, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Chair now recognizes Commissioner Currie, chair of the Community Development Committee.
Thank you, President. Dr. Sergeant Price, first item of my agenda is billing officials' report. We have sixty-two permits for the month of August, sixty-one residential renovations, one commercial renovation. We had four hundred and eighty total total permits year-to-date, five hundred and sixty-three total permits last year-to-date. Sixty-two certificates of occupancies, eighty-four inspections by type, uh seventy residential, fourteen commercial, uh thirty-one of the complaint violations, notices, issues in the days to comply, and actions taken. We also have a lot of calls, communications, site visits, ongoing files, follow-ups, and various staff members that take care of these issues, and we thank all them for their help. Also want to thank Bob Shep, Shally, Joe Matthias, and all our staff and our police, and everyone that take care of these matters. Next, my liaison positions are the planning commission, community events, and Lowermoreland Township School District's DEI committee. Uh, with regard to planning commission, E J had advised that there will be no planning commissioning for September. Um, under community events, we have the fall movie night, which is scheduled for Saturday, September twenty-third. And the movie is Super Mario Brothers, the time is seven o'clock. And it's at Huntington Valley Library. Not sure what the weather's going to be. If it's chilly, bring a blanket and a chair. We have a fall open house. And this event is coordinated with the Huntington Valley Fire Company and Fire Prevention Day. Uh, that date was changed to October seventh instead of the fourteenth uh due to some conflicting school district events. So it will be eleven-two-two uh at the township building at our fire company right here. Uh, then we have our Trump Retreat, which is going to be Saturday, October twenty-first, and our rain date is Sunday, October twenty-second. Uh, we also have our fall and Halloween home tour. Uh, so if you enjoy decorating or your home for Halloween, we'll talk. And want to share your uh masterpiece with others, please. Uh, send us your photos and your decorations and submit it to inputlowermoreland.org by October twenty-fifth. Uh, I want to thank Leah, our assistant, for putting everything on on our website. And uh these events, uh I know, you know, uh library and township is posted. Movie night and everything will be posted on our website and our Facebook page in very shortly. Next is Lowermoreland Township School District, DEI. Uh, I had gotten an email from Carla Pasetti, Lowermoreland's uh supervisor of curriculum and community engagement. Um, she's going to be collaborating with the DEI council, and she's going to be continuing its important work at the Lowermoreland School District. So um, we're, I'm looking forward to meeting her, and the first meeting is set uh at Mary Avenue Cafeteria from six to eight. And it's going to be on September eighteenth and dedicated to setting goals for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and exploring the C R dash S E framework. And uh there's three other meetings set, one in November, one in January, and one in April. And that's all I have for um for the board. Does the board have any questions?
Commissioner, I had just one thing I wanted to fill in because we used to have one additional agenda item for you, so just if anybody was here for that purpose.
Sure.
Um, so we had the sketch plan application for Eight County Line Road. We had sent out two notices about that, um, and ultimately after that notice went out, um, they ended up withdrawing from this evening's agenda. So just in case, I wanted to make sure that was.
Yes, they did. So, does anyone from the board have any questions regarding unions? Anyone from the public? Anyone on Zoom? If not, that concludes my agenda. And again, just to just to sum up, because uh with regard to the billing officials' report. Um, and I just want to thank Bob Shally again for everything and a lot of years of uh of service. And uh continue to work with him and at the township. Um, and I know he's looking forward to spending a lot of time with his grandchildren, his family. So until till you leave, dear sir, we appreciate every minute you're giving us and all your time and effort and devotion. Thank you. Thank you, Doc. That concludes my agenda. I just received.
Okay. The chairman recognizes Commissioner Undercover for Commissioner Howson for the Public Property Committee.
Thank you. Item J, review and consider pump station upgrade proposals. Engineer Mike McCree solicited COSAR's proposals from four eligible vendors for the long-awaited pump station replacement project. The stations to be replaced include Longview Drive, Hallowell Road, and Woodland Road, which is in Burnathen. These replacements are necessary because the old pneumatic ejector stations are functionally obsolete and well beyond their useful life. Two of the four contractors submitted proposals for our review. Only one of those two actually provided pricing for all three pump stations. The other did not submit for Hollowell Road replacement. Uh, the project cost is unfortunately much higher than anticipated. PSI Pumping Solutions Incorporated provided the one full proposal, which breaks down as follows. Removal of existing stations, which is one hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Bypass pumping during construction is thirty-nine thousand. Purchase and install new pumps is six hundred six thousand. Electrical is one hundred eight thousand. Erosion control and restoration is twenty-one thousand, and startup is eighteen thousand for a grand total of nine hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. The other proposal provided by MKG, MGK Industries Incorporated had higher unit costs as the total cost for just Longview Drive and Woodland Road was nine hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred twenty dollars. So there, it would not have been recommended even if it was complete. Uh, there are two options. Option one is that we do have sufficient funds to authorize PSI Pumping Solutions Incorporated to proceed. There's at least a four-month lead time for all materials to come in, which means this project cannot start until twenty twenty-four. The downside of this cost will take up more of our capital funds than we had hoped to allocate to this project. Or this is not a project that we can avoid doing. Option two is manager Hoffman spoke with Mike McCree about advertising a public bid. Instead of proceeding with COSAR's proposals, this will allow us to test the market with pricing we've already received. Mike advised we could have been resolved for consideration by November fourteenth meeting. On the downside, this would delay the project another two months. That's where procurement process could not begin until contracts were signed. Additionally, if it's feasible, the pricing would come in higher than COSAR's proposals. For the program turns terms, PSI's current quote is only good for fifteen days. So if rejected bids in November went back to PSI, their price may have changed in that period of time. Uh, the recommendation is, you know, this is a challenging situation. Let's recommend to accept PSI Pumping Solutions Incorporated's proposal at nine hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Manager Hoffman can then work with Mike McCree and see if there are other, any other measures they can take to reduce the potential cost. I was unsure that may be possible. Uh, this allows a procurement process to begin immediately. So the project can proceed as soon as available time, otherwise this project will extend later into twenty twenty-four and impact SaaS availability. Shift focus to the next batch of projects. Is a motion for us to consider PSI's bid. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? All right, seeing none, I make a motion to approve the proposal from PSI Pumping Solutions Incorporated for the pump station replacements in the amount of nine hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Sir. Is a motion and second to approve the PSI Pumping Solutions Incorporated proposal as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I said, thank you.
Uh, next on Commissioner Howson's agenda is her liaison report. Uh, I don't have anything. Just remember that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. The chair now recognizes Commissioner Cowan, chair of the Public Safety Committee.
All right, thank you very much. The first step on my agenda of this evening is chief of emergency services employment agreement. Both our council and board commissioners have considered employment agreement for the chief of emergency services. A conditional offer was made to Mark Showmaker to take on this position. Uh, the employment agreement details are consistent with what was approved in the board's twenty twenty-three budget. They also filed an MOU between township and the borough. Attached in our booklets, you have a copy of that employment agreement. Uh, is there any questions in the board on employment agreement?
No.
No, and I don't believe that was sent out to the public. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve the employment agreement with Mark Showmaker for the chief of emergency services position.
Second.
It's in motion and second to approve the chief of emergency position as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have, thank you.
Mark, if you can hear us, congratulations. All right, next up.
Congratulations.
Next up for your review is I'm going to turn this over to manager Hoffman, T V contract report goals.
Yes, so um, this is another one of Chief's garage organizational goals. Um, and the civil service commission meeting um was given authorization to proceed with the testing process if we were able to accomplish this step, um, which was to add uh the pay scale and some other collective bargaining agreement considerations um to add the corporal uh rank uh to the police department. Uh, so you'll recall that earlier this year in uh a change to our civil service regulations, we created that position. Um, but weren't able to do anything with that because there were no terms within the collective bargaining agreement. So I sat down for uh two Fridays uh with a uh kind of ad hoc bargaining committee that was put together by the P P A. And uh essentially, we just had to work out two uh groups of terms. Um, the first one uh simply is to determine the salary. Um, so uh what was determined was to have, we have our kind of full patrol rate, and then there's a sergeant rate. Um, and uh the agreed-upon rate uh is four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars higher than the full vigil. Um, the second component of this uh on a level um in that we currently have uh there's a, I guess, a contract provision about a officer in charge. Um, and this is somebody who uh kind of takes control uh of the squad if the sergeant is not working that day. And the policy within the department is uh that either a sergeant or an O I C must be working at all times. As a result of that, um, I have included for years in our budget and allocation to cover the uh As a result of that, um, I have included for years in our budget and allocation to cover the, uh, the possible amounts of O I C pay. That are based off of the amount of time that sergeants have, uh, for leave. Um, essentially what we're doing is reallocating that O I C amount. Um, and then having that become just instead, what is the base salary for the individuals who will eventually be promoted into the corporal role? Um, so there was language that, uh, I guess was no longer necessary in the contract, um, that had to do with that O I C program. Um, so the, there's a M O U that's attached, uh, to this memo, um, that just establishes that pay rate. And addresses that, uh, the, the language regarding O I Cs, um, and the, the, the main implication being. That hypothetically, if a, uh, so most of this falls within the township's managerial prerogative. Uh, but in the hypothetical that either a sergeant or a corporal misses significant time. So they have an injury and they're out for six months. The chief and lieutenant have the discretion to be able to temporarily appoint somebody into one of those leadership positions. And during that period of time, what is, I think, obviously fair is that we would pay somebody who has that temporary assignment. At the rate of the role that they are temporarily assigned to. Uh, so that is what that language, uh, does in, in the M O U. Um, just before, uh, we started the meeting this evening, even though I had gotten a heads up last week that the P D A had approved it. Um, they did hand deliver us, uh, their signed M O U. So, um, we're highly recommending that the board receive with this. Um, so that we're able to, uh, I guess, go ahead with, uh, the promotional exam for not just a D O P sergeant's position. But also for five corporal positions.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Chris. Any questions from the board? Anything from the public? I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the P D A establishing the contract terms for the creation of the corporal position.
Second. In motion and second to approve the L O U as so described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I said, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on my agenda for this evening is the Civil Service Commission appointment. As discussed at the July meeting, Commissioner Sirkin's term on the Civil Service Commission is set to expire on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. A resolution appointing him to a new six-year term is attached for the board's consideration. Does anybody have any questions on this? Anything from the public? No. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-three, twenty-one, reappointing Dr. David H. Sirkin to the Civil Service Commission. For a term commencing September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, expiring September fourteenth, twenty twenty-nine.
Second. It's a motion and second to approve Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-one as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I said, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, sir. Next up on my agenda is Chief Scarrato's report.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Canelli. Um, first, thanks, uh, Dr. Sirkin for all your work over the last, uh, six years on the Civil Service Commission. Um, we've made a lot of, uh, improvements at the police department and, you know, I'd like to thank you for all your efforts in that. So it'll be good to have you around for the upcoming years. So, thank you. Um, so my report for last month, we did have a series of various disturbance cases. Uh, we did have two overnight residential burglaries, which were unfortunately on the news last month. Um, we do have some leads on those, uh, some forensics that are out. So hopefully we will be, uh. Securing the offenders, uh, in the hopeful near future. Uh, so we'll be keeping our eye out for that. Uh, a series of thefts occurred in the community, uh, not too bad as our previous rashes of theft from autos. We only had one, uh, theft from a vehicle last month. So that, that was pretty good. Uh, we're happy with that. Uh, four drug arrests, two public intoxications, five DUIs last month. Kind of our standard fare. Again, we caution everyone to be aware of attempted frauds and through phone calls, through the internet. Um, some of our residents, I think it's important to highlight that we had eight cases of municipal ordinance violations. That were either warnings were cited. They involved everything from, um, a case of landscaping. You know, the lower end of town off of Grasshopper, uh, contractors working outside of their hours. At other locations in the township, uh, barking dog cases, dogs running at loose. So everyone just should be encouraged, these volume of life issues that are, uh, facing some of our communities. Are bringing, being addressed regularly by our officers. And we had one warrant arrest from another jurisdiction. That was transported to Montgomery County Prison. Um, we also had a case from June of twenty twenty-three. A juvenile female, uh, was accosted on the internet from an adult male while online. Our officers completed forensic investigation identifying the offender in New York State. That subject was arrested, charged with corruption of a minor and brought back here to Lowermore and faced charges. Uh, so we're, you know, outstanding job by Detective Cattabiano. And then we had a really great community event at Hicks Old Fashioned Ice Cream Poll. Um, it was a great time. We actually had over a hundred and thirty residents that our officers interacted with. Um, we got to meet a lot of people from the community. It was, it was a great event. I had a blast. Uh, K nine Thor and his handler. Notice I always say the dog first because they're more popular. Uh, and his handler, one location. So, uh, uh, all in all, everything's going really well with the department. I'm looking forward to running the corporals examination. Um, it's going to provide our department better command and control. Better structure, um, a more intensive selection process. And so we're really happy about providing this, uh, improved leadership throughout our organization. Uh, in addition, uh, one of the civil service rules changes that did take effect. Is the, uh, requirement for physical agility tests for all promotions. And I gotta tell you, I'm super excited from the officers downstairs. When, um, five o'clock, I was invited to go running with several officers that are actively training. Um, we have six trained personal trainers for law enforcement officers that are part of our department. Um, officers on every single squad are training to make sure they're prepared for this task. So all in all, I think it's been a huge, wonderful, uh, win for our police department and our community. So, uh, thanks again for all your support in doing those things. Couldn't have done it without, uh, Mr. Hoffman and all his hard work negotiating. And, uh, so thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Me?
Thank you, Chair. Fire motions, pal.
Evening commissioners, uh, just a few notable things with the fire department. Uh, there was a scheduled, uh, penny pack, uh, walk-through and drill along the, uh, the trail. Um, Burnathen had set this up to work it with, uh, Huntington Valley, but due to the bad weather that night, it's been canceled. And a future date has not, uh, been set yet. Um, on Friday, the eighteenth, August eighteenth, uh, Huntington Valley Assistant Station two hundred McKinley at a building fire, only Redeemer Hospital. Um, due to the fact that we have a stand, we have a crew in station, we were out in less than sixty seconds. And we were the first, uh, engine crew in that, uh, at the hospital. We found the cause to be a floor scrubber and, uh. During, since we've had the daytime crew, uh, we're getting out in probably less than sixty to ninety seconds on most of our calls. With the driver officer and at least two firefighters. So it's been a, uh, a very, uh, rewarding or, um. What I'm looking for. Program, good program for us, especially during the day. We had a basement fire on Corsica Drive. It was a, due to some plumbing problems for a fish tank. This led to a follow-up, um, inspection from myself and the code enforcement officer. And we found that electrical permits needed to be pulled and some building and fire alarm permits were pulled. I've spoken to the resident and we're in the process of doing that right now. Uh, during the month of Yassol, there was a lot of, uh, surrounding companies dispatched to odors of smoke in the area. That was due to the wildfires in Jersey. So we had one or two of those that day. And, um, on Saturday, the twenty-sixth, we had a, uh, contractor who was sealing a driveway. What a mess. And I wanted to thank, uh, Steve and Public Works for coming out to help do that, uh, that cleanup and get rid of that material. Under emergency management, uh, Rich Worthington and I attended a orientation session with Valley Christian School. There's a lot of new staff and teachers. So, uh, Rich and I went over just emergency procedures and, uh, we're going to review their handout. Tomorrow, there's a meeting with the, uh, emergency management up in Upper Province. We will be discussing the mutual aid agreement. There is a few, um, topics that came up as far as dispatch and emergency responding with mutual aid. So hopefully we'll bring that up tomorrow and we're hoping to have, we had a draft. That was going to get voted on, but now with these new top issues coming up, we may not have it till, I'm hoping, October, November. For Montgomery County, uh, Public Safety, the Hazmat team has got their brand new, uh, truck. Um, this is going to be a state-of-the-art hazardous material vehicle that carry all our equipment. Uh, a lot of manpower. We're hoping to have this thing in service by the end of September, beginning of October. And I'm part of that team. So, uh, we're looking forward to it. Very excited about it. Um, just a couple, uh, inspections and investigations with Bob and I both being off, we've kind of. Uh, piggybacked on each other. He did some stuff for me. I did stuff for him. It was all in my report. Um, Steve Pilch and I will, Steve especially, and myself will be now over at the high school. Doing more, um, ceiling inspections, final inspections. They're looking to put the stamp life system in service by October and the fire alarm system, which we will have, um. Uh, many more inspections over that to make sure that's okay. And then as we get further or closer into the fall. We'll have the fire companies come over and do daytime walkthroughs and a nighttime walkthrough. And so I have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Thank you very much. Alright, that's explaining my liaison reports. First up is the developed library. The library has resumed its regular schedule. They are open seven days a week. Summer learning was a huge success. Total registration of three hundred and fifty people. Total minutes read, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-four. New record for. Active readers were two hundred and seventy-two. Beth Bylous has been promoted from youth services, assistant head to teen and adult services. Beth recently was awarded a best practice STEM award from the Pennsylvania Library Association. For her CSI program, run with, with Rich Worthington. Lowermore Township's deputy emergency management coordinator. Congratulations to Beth on that. Movie Night Under the Stars will take place on the back lawn of the library, September twenty-third at seven P M. I know my kids always love that. It's a great township event. Movie will be Super Mario Brothers. This event is sponsored by the township. Check out the library website for more info, H B library dot org for events and programs. My second liaison on the point is H E A A. As you know, fall sports are starting up and, well, well, I actually already underway. There, uh, everything I say is going well and I have no further comments on that. Tony, Beth, you got it.
Thank you, Commissioner Canelli.
The chairman recognizes Commissioner Pace, Chair of the Public Works Committee.
Item Q, review and consider D C E D M T F grant resolution for the Byberry Road, uh, sidewalk. The board already approved the resolution to apply for the grant for the Byberry sidewalk construction, the amount of four hundred thirty-five thousand in the July meeting. The township received word that the application now requires two designated executors for the grant, not just one as previously submitted. This resolution is resolved. Also add my name as a second, second executioner of the grant agreement should the township be awarded.
And my in this scenario was E J.
E J. So then. Does the board have to make a motion to approve her or?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board? From the public? So I'd like to make a motion to add. Assistant manager E J as the second executioner of the grant agreement.
Sir. The motion, the second to, uh, approve, um, the assistant manager Lee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chris, do you want to talk about the Longview Basin?
I would love to.
There you go.
So we've been talking several months now, um, about this project opportunity that kind of found us through the Penny Pack Trust. Um, and it's a collaboration with the Center for Watershed Protection. They had received William Penn Foundation funding, uh, to install this kind of. Uh, fancy storm basin, uh, platform that is going to help monitor the weather and, uh, I guess, gauge how much water the basin releases. And in anticipation of, uh, bigger storms. Um, they originally had obtained, uh, the funding for that project, uh, for something at Villanova University. Um, but they were not able to proceed for whatever reason. Um, so through, uh, the relationship between Center for Watershed Protection and the Penny Pack Trust. Um, they thought of us for that project. So ultimately what that's going to do, um, is that we're retrofitting the Longview Drive basin. That's something that has been part of our plans, uh, particularly with the creation of the Stormwater Fund for this year. So it's the first basin retrofit project. But then we're going to utilizing these grant funds, um, to be able to install that platform here. Um, so one of the phases to be able to proceed with that was doing a memorandum of understanding. With the Center for Watershed Protection that memorializes how we're going to take the William Penn Foundation grant funds. Um, have the township do the upfront, uh, cost and then seek reimbursement through C W P. Um, so those are the terms that are in that M O U that is attached. Um, and we are recommending that the board approve that this evening.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the M O U with the Center for Watershed Protection as described.
Okay. It's a motion and second to approve them. You as described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I said, thank you.
Item S is Public Works. Steve here.
Thank you, Commissioner Pace. Uh, during August, I, it's one of the ways to work the public works for the capital budget, the budget at the back of twenty-three. Make sure we're on pace, make sure everything's okay. And I start to look ahead to twenty-four, what we're gonna need and, and do going forward. Um, we continue work with the school districts engineers, helping them out, anything they're doing with the construction down there. So they were called down to help them, just locate a lot of utilities are down there. And tomorrow we're going to put the family centers parks on that. Because they have to move there, they're still playing slightly. Um, the aqua main replacement work on Builder area is progressing. And Buck Road, they're starting to do the final restoration work in the trench. So that'll be good for the winter and then we'll bid that out to pave all Buck Road in twenty twenty-four. Um, which, knowing most of the roads I have for next year, I'm probably going to try to get some recommendations in December to you. And then we can get a bid out early January and hopefully get our paving done a little bit earlier in twenty twenty-four. Um, and parks. We are working on the pickleball courts. I have public work. We have the stuff based down. I have, uh, getting the big packet ready for the paving and the coating. That should go out this week, maybe next weekend. Get approvals and you guys hopefully the October. Um, the backwards ramps came in for the basketball court at Falcons. So get that project finished by the end of September. This Commissioner Canelli said, fall sports are huge right now. You know, soccer's very big. So. Lowermore Park is set up. We had a couple tears on the turf. So we had that field turf come out, made those repairs before the, or their first game, or the net stand there were changed. Um, and the field was groomed and we'll continue to watch that throughout the rest of the fall. Um, Chris mentioned the Longview Basin or relaunching project for the Betfair Sanitary Sewer Project. That'll start September twenty-fifth. That'll also include the relining of the Buck Road storm plate. Repair that you guys have, uh, approved with the twenty-three capital budget.
About it? Mm-hmm. So is the leave schedule being published in the newsletter already or?
Yeah, it should be.
It's not in the newsletter. It's the owner's website, I think.
It's already made?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that it should be updated on the public works, uh, page. But if it's not, I'll, I'll make sure it's done there.
And the second question is, um, so all the aqua work that's going on in, like in Ward Four. So, uh, will they, they pay for half, every half of each road to repair?
Yeah, yeah. So what happens is they're obligated to, to pave half width at the end of their project. Those who go off, and we'll talk about a price. I know we pay per square yard. So they'll offer me a price of what they would give us cash-wise as opposed to them paving halfway. And as long as it's obviously in our favor. We actually end up making enough money that we can pave the extra roads and do the roads full width.
So I'm, I'm a little bit confused how they come up with halfway. What, what was, what's the basis of that?
That's our ordinance is that any road that the utility comes in to do, they need to pave.
Because they're literally most of the streets, it's, they're, they're working on the entire width of the roads.
Right. So if you recall, the first portion of Buck Road that was paved between Huntington Pike and Byberry. If, that was the premise of why they ended up just agreeing to do full width because the main would kind of zigzag across the road. So half width assumes that it's able to kind of hug one curb line. And most often it doesn't. And that's one of the ways that we're able to work with aqua with to kind of maximize the.
So, so when they're done, the dam, for I should say, kind of went all over the place. So we'll negotiate wider.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand that they just run one, you know, line, but they're basically, they're on every corner.
Because gant was a newer road. I tried to get them to stay hug the, the curb line, which is what I had them doing more as well. Unfortunately, there was too many of the utilities there, that, that's why they have to move out. And that's sometimes why it'll, it'll drop.
Isn't it a, a complicated factor is that they're not actually removing the old main?
Yeah, they, they always leave their old one there, so they got. The existing main, the new main, gas, electric, so.
We're hopefully all long gone by the time they actually have to do a project where they remove the two old ones. Uh, but at some point, there's only so much space on the ground to, to put all this stuff.
Uh, thank, thanks for talking. I appreciate it. Thanks for the reports, Steve.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is P, liaison position. There's nothing to report for the Historic Architecture Review Board. So I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Pace. Chairman, I recognize Commissioner Oger, Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you. Item U, review zoning hearing board agenda and decisions. There are four applications on the zoning hearing boards September agenda. First is application number twenty three dash eleven. This application is continued from August. Is for a vacant parcel on Rutherford Road. Eminem Building Company seeks a variance to allow a reduction in the front yard setback from fifty feet to forty feet. Due to the existence of freshwater wetlands to allow construction of a single family detached home. Since last month's advertised hearing, we have received a comment from a neighbor asking the township to confirm the wetlands delineation by the applicant's engineer. However, the report was prepared by a licensed professional, which is the standard that we rely on. A concerned neighbor, eligible, may join party status and ask questions of the applicant. Yeah, we recommended they attend the meeting represented by counsel to express this concern. Next is application number twenty three dash twelve. The application of Claudiana and Blendar Salima of thirty two fifty five Maple Road. Who seek a variance to allow construction of a three hundred eighty seven square foot detached garage. Outside the principal building setback. Next is application number twenty three dash thirteen. The application of Constance in Bycheck of six fifty one Red Lion Road. Who seeks a variance to allow new fencing to exceed the maximum six foot height to seven feet. You may recall this fence was subject to a harbor application. That application is on hold until there is direction on the zoning relief. Fourth is the application number twenty three dash fourteen. Application of John and Elsa Cochrane of two thousand and forty nine Williamsburg Road. These get variance through the fifty foot front yard setback to forty five feet, one inch to allow for a residential addition. There was no hearing in August as application number twenty three dash eleven was continued to September. Item V is my liaison, liaison report, which is the Penny Pack, Penny Pack Ethnological Restoration Trust. Um, as you remember from the previous hearing, uh, they just purchased a large parcel of land. Um, there are other things in the works which are very exciting and they desperately need your support, so please join in part. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oger. That completes our advertised agenda items. Is there any public participation on any non-internal factors?
None. Um, we have an executive session immediately following adjournment of this uh board commission meeting to discuss a real estate matter with our attorney. I'd like to make a motion uh for adjournment. Sir, a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have, meaning adjourn, thank you.